I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council study session. Please call, roll.
Mayor Mangrelly.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Orr. Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusin.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Good to see everyone this afternoon. Welcome, former Mayor Ober. Good to see you out there today. Uh, we have two items today on the agenda. If you'd like to comment, please grab a comment card, get it to the clerk, and we'll start with, uh, item 3A.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director. Excited to be here for the mid-year budget report. Excited we have a good crowd today, all interested in budget, I'm sure. Uh, this is, uh, not a long presentation, just we go through the, kind of, the highlights from the current year budget. We talk about some of the challenges that we're going to see coming into the new year budget and then kind of go over the deadline, the timeline, I guess, not deadlines, but timelines for the new year budget. So as we go through this, please interrupt me if you have any questions. Uh, be glad to address them. There's a, some, kind of, some direction points that it would be good to kind of get a feel from council as we go through this, how they want the, how they want it to be addressed in the new budget. Uh, I'll point those out as we get to them. Just a real quick recap, looking at our operating budget for 2020, just over a hundred million dollars. Forty-four percent of that is in the general fund. We're going to go into that in more detail. Seventeen percent is in our restricted funds, like operations for streets and bedtacks and operating grants. And then the remaining thirty-nine is in our enterprise funds. Looking at the general fund, uh, this is the general fund operating budget. As you can see, eighty-two percent of our general fund is personnel. Um, obviously, we're a service organization. The way we provide services with personnel, that's why it's eighty-two percent. Obviously, one of the significant services we provide is public safety. Eighty percent of our general fund is currently going to public safety. And the remainder there, you can see eight-point-eight in recreation, five-point-four in library, and general government, which is basically everything else in the general fund, uh, is rolled up there. So our budget from last year, it was two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars, sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two. Um, of that, we split the operations into a couple different categories to give you guys a better idea as we put the budget together. Our general operations is tracking, we're at fifty percent of the year. Obviously, we're tracking real close to that, just a little bit below. On the PSPRS arc that comes out of the general fund, we separate there. Um, again, this is more of a timing of payrolls and payment type things, but that's tracking right about where we expect it to be. Um, PSPRS tax is a restricted fund, but, you know, that's almost exactly at fifty percent. That doesn't have anything to do with payroll accruals. That has to do with how the revenues are coming in. Um, and we did a relatively good job of estimating revenues for this year, as you can see, coming right at fifty. Uh, we had a grant contingency, which hasn't been allocated by council yet. Um, again, that's something we do throughout the year. We talk about it, and then right before the new budget, we kind of parse that up to the projects that council has directed it to. We had a non-budgeted item that came up. As you recall, we did a refunding of two issues in the streets fund, saved significant money, um, in our streets fund, over one-point-five million over the next few years. Wasn't budgeted, cost sixteen million. That will be a re-appropriation that we have to do as we come in, as we talked about when we did it. But it was a good thing for the city to do, take advantage of the markets. And then our capital. Again, capital, capital is always a challenge to budget because of the timing of the capital, and when will the projects get done, and is it going to rain, or whatever slows down or speeds up a project? And as you can see, halfway through the year, we only spent seventeen percent, but that doesn't mean we aren't committed to contracts for different road or wastewater water projects. So with that total budget, we're at thirty-eight-point-seven percent. We do a city as a whole look, um, in this presentation, as opposed to walking you through all twenty different funds. Um, so this is all the expenditures for the city to date through December 31st. As you can see, a lot of the departments are right around where they're supposed to be, at, um, forty-five, fifty percent. Community development's a little bit lower. They had a couple operating projects with, with, um, imaging of plans and things that haven't got, gotten going because they've been busy with other projects that you may have heard of, new computer systems. And then, uh, the other one that's slightly off is the non-departmental, uh, which is more contingencies. That forty-four-point-eight million dollar grant contingency is in there, and that, that's why that's below the fifty. Looking at expenditures, we broke it, our, I'm sorry, ex, um, capital, uh, non-operating expenditures. You can see the airports at seven-point-one, um, Public Works at eighteen-point-six, and other, which is accumulation of all the other projects, including fire vehicle replacements, drill ground improvements, computer software. Central Square is in the other, um, aerial photography, a few things like that are in that other category, just to give you a feel for what's in there. And again, the bond refunding, which again, wasn't budgeted. So that's all well and good. That's where we're spending the money, but how's the money coming in for the year? So our next slide will take you to revenues. So as you can see, our revenues are coming in good. Uh, we're having strong, uh, sales tax growth. Uh, overall, we're above where we had projected to be, um, having to do with, uh, the way we project sales tax. Of course, we'll be doing the projection for next year and the next month. So we're not only projecting twelve months, we're actually projecting almost eighteen months out of what we're going to get. And of course, trying to factor in any foreseeable slowdown or recession that's being talked about in the news, um, which is looking to be probably in 2021, possibly some slowness, or if you've been looking this week, it could be starting now. Uh, other than that, the revenues are going in good for this year. As you saw in the council, um, the bi-monthly update that, uh, that you all received from the departments, we talked about the individual sales tax category, and our tax, uh, taxable activity is up four percent over last year, which is above where we budgeted. So again, we're at fifty-four percent there. Bed tax is still holding strong. Property tax, uh, is more a factor of when it's collected. As you know, you pay your property tax either twice a year or all at once. So it's really hard to tell much from a percentage there. Looking at the others, other things to note, fines and forfeitures continue to be low, below the trend. Again, that's a national trend. That's a, uh, directed trend from the Supreme Court, as, as opposed to fining people beyond their capacity, finding better ways to enforce law. So we've seen a continual decrease in our fines and forfeitures. Not a huge part of the general fund, but just something to note. Nothing else there. Golf revenues are slightly below. That's more an issue that we put a three-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency in our projections, just in case golf is doing well. That way, they have the ability to spend that on needed cart pass or other improvements if it happens. But it does make them look like revenues are slightly down. And the other category is primarily made up of interest earnings. We've been doing really well with interest earnings this year. Probably not going to hold as we get into the future, as interest rates continue to fall on what we can invest in. Uh, again, we have our grants. Down at the bottom is non-operating grants. Uh, they come in as they come in. And our debt proceeds are primarily, the thirty-two thousand is made up of anticipated WIFA loans um, that have actually not been drawn because of the timing on those projects. So that sixteen-point-five million there is primarily that refunding that we issued the debts on. So that's kind of a look at where we are. It's all good news. Um, like I say, we're taking into account, looking at economic trends, trying to figure out what to do with revenue projections for next year. And we'll, we'll, um, be bringing you that as we get into the process more, but we do try to take into account any foreseeable slowdowns. So looking ahead, next year, I wanted to talk about a few points that, uh, we need to think about and be aware of as we get into the process. So on these points, I got, I have airport at the top of the list, just for Robin. Um, but a lot of exciting stuff happening at the airport, um, which is all good news. We have increased activity out there, which is good. It brings in additional revenues out there, which help cover the operating budget. But they are not going to cover the capital matches on grants. Capital matches on grants has to come from the general fund. That means, as you saw earlier, it's competing with public safety. Eighty-two, eighty percent of the general fund is public safety, so runway extension or a fire truck to replace a broken one. You know, those are the kind of decisions we have to make as we look at this budget. If it's not going to be able to be used, you know, and again, it's not one or the other, you know, timing, we try to make all that work. But just something to keep in mind, the capital match does come from the general fund, does compete with the direct services of the community as a whole. So the, we have a pension funding policy, which council adopted last year, updated last year, and adopted the year before. Um, we will be looking at it again this year as we get through the budget process. It currently calls for the annual required contribution to continue to come from the general fund. Again, I would assume council wants to maintain that policy, so we'll budget that and bring it to you that way with the annual required contribution coming from the general fund, unless I hear differently, so. We have a market compensation study we're in the middle of. That is not going to be ready in time to do any specific budgeting in this year. That doesn't mean council can't take action when they receive it in the summer or in the, in the fall. It just will require re-appropriation and figuring out where the money will come from. But it is something to keep in mind as we go through the budget process. We may want to reserve some contingency to be able to act on something from that study or to have it for something else, increasing rainy day funds or whatever, as we look at, you know, potential recessions in the next couple of years. There is also concern on unsued areas in town, and how are we going to fund capital projects to bring some of those areas into, um, into our sewer system? So that's something we're going to look at, different options we're going to review as we go through, through the budget this year, so that I know, um, Councilman Blair is working on a committee on that. So we want to be able to have some financing options for them as, as that, the plans come together. And we always have our friends at the legislature trying to do things with revenues, whether it's changing the prime contracting formula again, um, which they are working on, or other things which impact our tax base. So we continue to be diligent. Tyler, of course, keeps us informed, and we work with the league as well on the finance calls to make sure that we're on top of those things. I do not know of anything significant in the coming year, but we will continue to watch because stuff always comes up at the last minute. And any increases, as we look at budget packages that are currently being submitted by departments as we come in. And obviously, as we try to allocate these limited resources, we need to continue to work on outcome-based budgeting and put the money where the outcomes that council wants to see are being achieved. So we will continue that through this budget process. Um, so we'll talk more about that in May when we get to the budget workshops. Property tax levies. As you know, we're limited significantly by the state legislature and what we can do with property tax increases. Property tax represents about four percent, four-and-a-half percent of our general fund. Not a huge part, but it's an important part. It's a very stable funding source, even in an economic downturn. Um, we have not increased that. We're allowed to increase it two percent every year if we go through a truth and taxation process. We have not done that since two thousand and seventeen. I'm not hitting these buttons very good with my left hand. So what does that mean? Right now, our levy is one-point-eight million. Um, there at the top is about a point-two-five-nine-nine tax rate, which is about fifty-two dollars per two-thousand, hundred-thousand-dollar house. We can increase that in 2021, just for new construction added to the tax rolls. That increases that by thirty-one thousand, bringing us to one-point-eight-two-seven. That actually lowers our levy, because of course, all the other properties went up as well. So that would lower our rate to point-two-four-eight-four, or about fif- forty-nine dollars per a two-thousand-dollar house. The available capacity we have that we have not increased over the last four years, um, including 2021 in that four-year count, is about a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So if council wants to go through the truth and taxation process, we could gain another hundred-and-fifty thousand in the general fund, bringing our levy to one-point-nine-eight, uh, bringing the tax rate to about point-two-six-eight-eight, which basically increases the levy on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house about four dollars to fifty-three-seventy-six. So that is something, if council wants us to include that in the process, uh, just a quick look at, uh, the graph that we always show, um, across the bottom in bar graphs is the city's levy. Blue, primary, red, secondary. Of course, secondary was related to the lakes purchase, which has paid off. As you can see, we have been trending down, down as we go. Across the top is the local fire districts. Of course, they are trending up as we go across time significantly again. So if we did this, we'd be looking at the fifty-three-point-seven-six, which is shown on this graph, taking it to the maximum levy, um, which would be compared to the five-hundred-and-sixty dollars on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house if you were in the fire districts. So just a quick recap of truth and taxation. We need to post the final levy limit worksheets from the county, which we have done. They are out on the, on our public website, available to the public. If council wishes us to proceed with increasing the property tax levy, that hundred-and-fifty, we need to start some of these other notices which happened before the thing. Uh, we have a sixty-day notice, uh, due on April 23rd, and then we have publishing in the paper on June 9th and June 16th. Those publishings cost, uh, I believe it's about a thousand dollars apiece? I think it was a piece. It's a, a publishing that does not happen in the legal section. It's actually in the body of the paper, quarter sheet ad as required by state law. From there, the process isn't much different than normal. We have a public hearing on it. The one additional thing is after the public hearing, which is scheduled right now for the 23rd of June, there would be a roll call vote, which, where each council member's name would be called, and they would do a verbal yay or nay to proceed. Um, with that, um, if that passes, we go to the adoption of the property tax levy, which is just a regular ordinance that would be adopted on the 7th of July. So I guess, kind of, any thoughts from council on whether they want to bring that levy to up a hundred-and-fifty or leave it where it's at with new construction?
Sounds like you're asking us a question.
Yeah, I only have one more slide after this, so.
Okay. Good presentation, Mark. Uh, and we will, we will answer that question here at the council. It's good to see the revenue up that four percent on the sales tax, to see the, uh, Prop 443 coming in, uh, ahead of schedule, so to speak, on the revenue. I do get concerned about, you know, a downturn. I appreciate you having that, uh, awareness that this isn't going to go on forever. Uh, can you speak a little bit to, uh, our contingency and rainy day fund, uh, moving forward?
Yes, in general terms. Council policy is to have twenty, um, percent operating revenues in the general fund as a contingency for rainy day. It's not a huge percentage. Uh, it's a lot higher than the five percent that they had when I started. So we've been able to bring it up to twenty. Um, it's, it's hard to come up with what that number should be. Obviously, the more you put in savings to have for a rainy day, it's the less services you can provide at the current time for the, um, citizens. Cities in Arizona are challenged because our tax base is very, um, subject to a recession. It's, of course, mostly sales tax and income tax from the state as well. Again, four percent is property tax, which is relatively stable through a recession. Uh, the rest of it is pretty cyclical, and as you recall from our, all the other presentations we do, you see the graph from the last recession. Um, we tried to do a relatively good job, and we did, and I feel a good job in the last significant recession, um, where other cities were cutting hours and, and laying off staff. We had very limited, um, eliminations of programs. We've been doing this a while. We've seen nine or ten recessions. We've been able to try to plan for them and have reserve. Would we, it would be good to have more than twenty? It's always good to have it, but it would mean less airport projects or less police on the street, so you have to weigh that. I think twenty is adequate. Um, it, the last recession was significant, biggest recession I've seen in the thirty-four years that I've been doing this. Um, and the twenty percent held us through that, along with other operating cuts, you know, staying on top of it, getting on those operating cuts early on, um, kept us from having to do significant, um, reductions in services, especially coupled with the increasing PSPRS at that same time. Fortunately, in another recession, we would not have, you know, the recession taking our revenues in PSPRS, um, going up because of 443 and the citizens and council's willingness to get that passed and resolve that issue. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the twenty. Would I like thirty? Yes, but I understand there's, there's other priorities as a government.
Been around a while. If you've seen nine to ten cycles.
I've been around a while. I used to have two arms.
Questions or comments from the council? Keep in mind, uh, you know, Mark's looking for some direction, particularly on this, uh, property tax. Councilman Blair.
Could you take it back to things to think about where it had the airport on the top there? Is there a way, and I, maybe you can do it, or you're going to do it prior to our budget meetings, the two that concern me are the funding for employees' market compensation study, number one. So is there a way we can put a placeholder in the budget for employee pay raises? First question. Second question would be is funding options for unsued areas? And this is where we get into what we just talked about when we start talking about reserves. You know, we've been promising this community for twenty-plus years, we're going to do something about their septic tanks. And I know that probably, at least in my mind, the airport area is probably the, the quickest one and the least expensive one to take onboard. Do we have a way to figure out, based upon the past history, what place marker we can put in the budget for the funding of engineering and main lines for that area?
Definitely. I'm, I'm sure Public Works is working on that, and we will work that through the capital projects. The item was put here because beyond the capital projects, uh, that Craig will bring forward to actually achieve these things, we got to come up with where the revenue is coming from.
Right.
And we have, we have some different ideas we've been talking about as a staff, which may include, you know, the water fund probably should be paying something for the effluent that is being recharged into the aquifer for, um, water. Uh, that could be put into the wastewater fund to be used to cover some of these things. Um, different things like that. We are looking for a way to come up with that funding source.
I understand that balance of twenty percent, or trying to raise it to thirty. And if you wanted to raise it to thirty for, you know, when the sky is falling, at some point, we don't know how bad. But still, we've been telling the people for twenty-plus years that I've been here that they're going to get sewer. And I think it's, at some point in time, you just have to march on. We need to take care of our employees in this community, uh, within our organization. We need to take care of the airport, which is a huge project. And we need to look at that realistically when we get in the budget year, so it's going to be an interesting conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the, the, we are planning to bring in the existing compensation plan, which is budgeting, uh, pay from where it's at, at a three percent level. The additional compensation would be from the study that HR is going through now, if there's any other changes. Um, and also in the unsued areas, uh, WIFA financing is a real alternative there. It is something that would score well in the WIFA, um, in the WIFA criteria for subsidy. So, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at all that and working with Public Works and be talking about that more when we get to the budget workshop.
Should we be thinking about, as a, as a group, the opportunity to look at when our sales tax is strong, to be able to have a, a baseline, and anything over that baseline, we move it to the rainy day fund so we can catch up, you know, on the end of that a little bit at a time by not disturbing any of our projects? So in other words, we've had great success with our, our sales tax right now. The question would be is if we're over a certain percent, do we take some of that and put it into the rainy day fund?
Again, that, that, uh, a rainy day fund is not a separate fund, not, not to get too far into accounting. Um, we used to, uh, years ago, I believe you were on the council at the time, um, accounting, uh, guidance actually did allow for such a separate fund, where we did take any, um, revenue received over budget and put it into a separate fund, only to be used at council discretion. Uh, that's no longer allowed in the accounting policy, but it does roll into the fund balance of the general fund, which is essentially a rainy day fund. Um, and then it is there for reallocation or not reallocation, based on what the council wants to do, depending on the capital projects that are brought forward. Again, we do not use those one-time surpluses to fund operations. You don't hire police officers with that one-time revenue, because they're going to want to be paid every year, most likely. And, uh, those one-time revenues are only there once, so they're used for capital.
We're saying at this point, um, the funding source for the unsued areas could be coming out of our wastewater and our, and our water.
Could be.
Wouldn't, uh, wouldn't affect our general fund balance.
Correct, but it could also legally come out of the general fund. It could also, um, be a property tax issue that we take to the voters and, uh, have additional property tax if you have a big swath that you want to do all at once. I mean, there's a lot of different options.
So you have a lot of combinations to go with that?
We do, and we'll be bringing those forward in more detail as we get the projects from Public Works.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So, so Mark, I think you're also looking for some direction about the property tax?
Yeah, if council's interested in do, going through the truth and taxation to increase at the hundred-and-fifty.
I'll just start the conversation on that, and then we'll see where, where it takes us. But, you know, our citizens certainly enjoy, um, that, I think about sixty percent of our sales tax comes from outside the city of Prescott, and that's a great benefit to our citizens. And, uh, at the same time, they are paying quite a hefty sales tax right now because of the three-quarters of a cent. Uh, I would say, let's not do anything with regard to property tax. That would be my vote. Uh, they've been very generous to, to vote in the, um, point-seven-five percent for the PSPRS, so I think we just leave our taxes where they are.
Great point, Mayor Protem. Um, and again, the hundred-and-fifty is the max. If council wanted just to say, we want to keep the tax rate at point-two-five-nine-nine like it is now, so what, you know, what portion of that one-fifty could we bring? Whatever council wants to do, we can do that. The amounts here are just the maximum.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with, um, Mayor Protem Orr. I think, um, property tax increase being such a tiny, tiny percent of the budget overall, uh, I don't see any legitimate justification for going through that process. I think most of our citizens, uh, respect the fact that we have a limited government and low tax rate overall. So my, um, I would not support increasing that. Secondly, I looked at the surplus contingencies and, uh, looked at, uh, federal government guidelines for financial officers, and twenty percent is, uh, considered, um, quite adequate. Uh, we had substantially more than that when we were wrestling with the PSPRS unfunded liability, and, uh, about eleven million dollars of, in essence, excess was, uh, committed to pay down that, uh, unfunded liability. So I think, uh, that should continue as an adequate amount. And if we do have a business cycle, and of course, let's keep in mind that a recession is defined as two consecutive quarters of negative GDP, um, and that's only happened once in, what, forty, fifty years?
No.
That's the last depression. When's the last recession that met that qualification?
Two thousand and ten.
Right. So prior to that.
Two thousand and five, and then two thousand and three. I, I, I don't have them all memorized. I'm getting too old. Um, but yeah, we, we do have recessions. Obviously, nothing compares to the two thousand and ten.
Business cycle.
Yeah.
Drops in revenue.
Yes.
Uh, technical recessions are generally pretty rare. Um, but we have to plan and expect that business cycles will occur. So having an adequate amount, I think, is, um, sufficient. The only other question I had was, um, the projections on Public Works. We've got a lot of construction going on, and we budgeted a significant amount, so the, the amount that we've actually expended is less than nineteen percent. Can you project where we're going to end up the end of the year?
That is part of what we do through. That is part of what we do through the budget cycle, so we will be doing that. I can't do it today. A lot of, even though we're only spending 19, we are committed on several contracts that are underway.
Craig could probably give an additional update, too, if you want to give it a second.
Mark's numbers specifically were expenditures to date. And when we ran the report as well at 50% of the year, when we looked at expenditures and encumbrances, then we were at like 51.5%. We have two projects out to bid right now. We have numerous more coming. So our expenditures, as well as encumbrances, will be up there near the budgeted amount.
And I know the city manager and I have been talking to some of our franchise contracts, which sometimes slowed down our ability to complete projects. And we hope that we can have a better understanding of how we can get those teams in from Unisource or possibly APS, so that projects aren't delayed in their completion. So hopefully, with those improvements, we can get more of these projects completed so that we can benefit from better roads and sewer lines and water lines and gas lines.
Yeah, the last being the lynchpin and the delays. Is that fair?
Yeah. Absolutely. And we are working on several projects, you know, with partners on projects in order to be able to move them forward. But there will be a little more construction going on soon.
I know. I've heard a lot of comments from people saying, how come we can't fix all these roads? And then when we get the roads under construction, they said there's too much construction. So it's kind of...
There will be more.
Pardon me, but damned if you do and damned if you don't. So getting more of them done, I think, in the long run will be very beneficial. So thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, I'm assuming that there's not an impending need for the extra $150,000?
Well, as we talked about...
Identified need, let's say.
At this point, no. I mean, obviously, I don't have the capital request from the department yet. That's all being formulated now. So, you know, there's always, you know, there could always be room for it, but again, $150,000 is not a huge number in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. And are we able to combine funds, like the water and wastewater fund?
We can always do anything council directs us to do within the guidelines. I don't think, I think there's other ways to come about that, that would maintain the accountability of having those two separate funds. The problem you run into when you roll them together, you know, people start to wonder if their sewer bill is covering their water works or whatever, that type of stuff. By keeping them separate, you have a separate accounting of those expenses, which is required by state law. We could overcome that. I don't think there's a need to do that to help fund unsued areas, because I think there's other ways we can, we can skin that cat, as they say, with transfers related to effluent recharge or other things. Or direct just transfers. Council can just say, we want to spend, you know, we want to transfer half a million from water to wastewater to cover unsued areas. I mean, there is ways to do it without losing accountability to the public.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to dovetail with what Mark said. I think the key to the whole discussion about water and wastewater is freeing up revenue from the water fund to assist where appropriate the sewer fund. And what Mark is alluding to is there are ways to do that without recombining the funds. And I think what I've heard from you guys is that you want the flexibility where the money's concerned. How we get there from an accounting perspective is kind of a secondary issue. I think that is what I've heard.
Very good. Well, I think what you're hearing in terms of consensus, we didn't hear from absolutely everyone, but I think in terms of the property tax, we don't have a stomach for seeing that increase at this point. And it's not a lot anyway.
Right. It is not. Again, last slide, just to get it out there for the public. We have the budget process up there. All the red items are public meetings. The first red one is, of course, today, and we have a good turnout. I'm sure it's all about the budget, not about the water, later on in the agenda. But we also have council workshops in May, 19th and 26th. That will be where we talk in detail, in more detail, about the budget. Council will receive detailed budget information prior to that, so you won't be walking into those meetings cold. Then we have the public hearings, the tentative budgets and those things. And encourage, obviously, the citizens, anybody interested, to please participate in those meetings and stay informed. We have a separate page on our website about the current year budget process, where we post all these workshops.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions, comments from the council, public comment?
I do have one, Card Mayor, from Howard Mechanic.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to comment regarding the issue of combining the water and wastewater fund. Mark had indicated that it is legal to do that under state law, and, but he also indicated that there's ways to transfer funds. But I think, under state law, the only way you can transfer funds from, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, transfer funds is if there is a legitimate, a purpose for that fund that can be justified to expend, let's say, funds from the water fund to the sewer, you would probably need to justify that. Based on what the city is considering, having a extra fee for providing water outside of city limits, and I know that's on the agenda, but it relates to this. The water fund will be bringing in extra funds, extra fee for properties outside of city limits. And I would like to see that money going to the sewer projects. That money is not justified to go to the sewer projects. But if the funds were combined, you wouldn't have to justify it, is my understanding. So in order to free up those type of funds, excess funds that are coming into the water fund to provide for sewer hookups, I think it'd be beneficial to join the two funds. And I'd appreciate if Mark could, you know, comment on that.
Thank you, Howard.
Just to clarify, the state law relates to the setting of rates, and it would require the separation of water rates and sewer rates and cost of providing those services, whether the funds were one or the funds were two. So if it's not justifiable with the two separate funds, it's not justifiable with the fund as a whole to affect those rates. I feel there is nothing, of course, defer to our legal expert, nothing in state law that would prevent the council from allocating money across, on a one-time type of basis. If it's a perpetual basis, that's not justified. But again, I feel there are ways we can justify transfers across. These wastewater funds reclaimed effluent does benefit the water fund, you know, providing more water for it to sell, things like that. So I think there is ways to justify it. And again, the state law does not talk about the separation of funds. It talks about the establishment of user fees and accounting for the expenses related to providing those fees, whether they're in the same fund or not. It still has to be accounted.
Well, then there's probably no advantage. It sounds like what you're saying, if you can transfer the funds in any case, it doesn't make a difference.
I don't think it does. I think we have enough justification to do whatever the council wants to do in that respect.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mark. Hope your arm gets feeling better. Let's move on to item 3B, please.
Review of proposed water service outside city limits.
Ah, I can't see. What is it? CC? Here, get that. Try. Quick. Yeah. Transfer. 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 Good afternoon, council members. I am back, so we're talking about water once again. I'm sure you missed me the last few months since adoption of the majority of the policy. When we did so, we decided we would take some more time, study the water outside of city limits proposals, come back at some point in the future. Today is that day. Congratulations to all of you for being here. In the meantime, we had several updates to our policies. We've looked at them, we've reviewed them, we've changed them. The Citizens Water Advocacy Group put out a fact sheet about water outside of city limits, said they would support it for the purposes of getting septic onto sewer and getting exempt wells, the number of those down. They had some other requirements. All of those things are in the proposals you will see today. So everything that Seawag has said we'd like to see, they will be seeing today. This is the first study session on this topic. Feel free to make suggestions, changes. We are open to those things. That's the purpose of these study sessions. To start with, the questions come up, why would we do this? What are we trying to do? And the answer is always, because it's what our citizens have asked of us. For some time, they've asked us to engage in regional cooperation, do things we can to reduce the overdraft in the aquifer. This is the main way we can do it outside of our own city limits. We can't go outside of city limits and tell people what to do. We have to give them an attractive option to want to do things to our very high standards. And the goal in this is not to send thousands of acre-feet of water to several developers that are going to make a boatload of money. The goal is to look at individual exempt wells, individual septic services, and move those on to city services. The way that we've accomplished that, well, under state law, we can't say we're going to allow it for these people and not for these people. We have to include it in the policy incentives and disincentives to do the same thing. So we've included things like everything that's required from Proposition 400. We've included things like the water acquisition cost, such that for a large lot of land, a large parcel of land, for a developer, it will be easier for them to annex into city limits rather than to get water through our outside-of-city-limits policy. It'll be easy, because they have to do everything that they would have to do to annex, plus spend millions of dollars to get the water. So to begin with, here are some of the potential benefits. We can reduce the overdraft in the AMA, first and foremost. Every one of those homes that's on its own well, its own septic service, isn't recharging water to the aquifer to the same extent that the city is. Every one of those homes that we can get onto the city system is a net positive for the aquifer. It's a positive thing. Seawag agrees with us on that. We can improve our water quality. We are going through a year-long study right now on how to increase the amount of sewer inside city limits. This would be the way we increase the amount of sewer outside of city limits. We know the benefits that sewer brings. Improved impairment from our creeks, reduction of the amount of E. coli. All of those things we will see with increasing sewer inside city limits. We will also see with increasing sewer outside of city limits. Increasing recharge and decreasing lost water, kind of two sides of the same coin. We have discussed the amount of sewer, the amount of recharge we get from sewered homes, upwards of 90%. You heard that from Mr. Woodard. While a home on the septic recharges around 10%. When we hook those up, those numbers flip. We then get to recharge that water. Decreased lost water also goes to, anytime we send water outside of city limits, they'll have to meet our standards for xeriscaping, they'll have to meet our standards for fixtures, they won't be able to use it for agricultural purposes, which is not true outside of city limits currently. We're going to decrease the amount of water to be used by these properties that they otherwise would be able to. Currently, we do not provide new water connections outside of city limits, new, of course, meaning in areas that don't already have an entitlement to water. We still have a lot of those. All development outside of city areas right now is supported by exempt wells and by water hauling. The vast majority of people that haul water get it from the city. So even when they're not on the city water system, city sewer system, we are still supporting that development by allowing people to haul water from us. But we're still not getting that recharge back. By changing this policy, we could cut down on those people. Now, I mentioned we don't provide new connections outside of our city, but we do. So this map is our city service area. Everything in gray is the city limits. Everything in yellow is areas outside of city limits that we still provide water to. Someone comes in tomorrow with an application to build homes in one of these yellow areas, we're going to accept it, we're going to review it. Ultimately, it'd be up to the council to determine if that's an appropriate development. And I'll note in the insert, that is basically all of Chino Valley, too. Through our purchase of the lakes, we assumed an obligation to provide residential water for all of the Chino Valley irrigation district lands, which is a good percentage of Chino Valley.
Question, Clyde?
Yes.
I've seen so many maps, it makes my head spin. So this map here, is it mirrored to what map is in the general plan?
It is not. This map is simply city limits and where the city serves the water currently. This is our current service area.
Councilman Blair, what is actually included in the general plan is a land use map. There is no water expansion zone map in the general plan.
I guess its point that I was trying to drive is, it's been voted on by the people on the general plan as a zone that someday those areas would be incorporated within the city of Prescott. Thank you.
Excuse me, Clyde?
Yes.
Do you know how many homes are being supported by city water that are not in city limits?
I do not. Not off the top of my head. About 3,000.
And what are the number of septic systems in the city, do you know? 2,500? I think it's 2,500.
I've got the two numbers in my head. There's like 1,200 water customers that are not on sewer in one group, and there's 1,800 water customers not on sewer. I just can't remember which ones in the city and which ones in the county.
Yeah.
But total, between in-city limits and outside of city limits, water customers, about 3,000 that are on septic.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's including Chino Valley? Okay, thank you.
So moving on, we have a little bit of a problem with exempt wells in the Prescott AMA. We have an outsized proportion of them compared to the rest of the state. And there are several reasons for those. One of the primary reasons is that there is just no way to get water service when you're not in one of the cities. When you don't have a regulated provider that's offering service, you go to exempt wells. In the Tucson AMA, the city of Tucson provides water service outside of their city limits, so most people don't need to drill their own wells. In the, around Phoenix, Phoenix provides water outside of their city limits, Mesa provides water outside of their city limits. There are other providers that fill that niche for people that would otherwise be drilling wells in other AMAs. We don't have that here. We can make an immediate, direct impact on the number of exempt wells by moving those exempt wells onto the city system. Exempt wells, obviously, from their name, they are exempt from most state laws regarding water usage. The city of Prescott has to monitor the amount of water it's withdrawing. We pay for that water. We monitor the amount of water we recharge. We monitor leaks and lossage along the way. Exempt wells do none of those things. We have no idea how much water they're using. They're exempt. We can do something to change that for the AMA. We've tried through the state legislature for some time. They have so far been unwilling to make changes that would be required for these things. So it's sort of up to us to do what we can for our area by moving into this field and trying to get exempt wells under control. I mentioned some of this a second ago. Obviously, septic tanks are a large problem with regard to recharge and the quality of our creeks and streams. As you're aware, most of the creeks, both of our lakes are listed as impaired, which is the highest level of polluted in the country. But with only a small fraction of those septics moving to sewers, we can correct that. We can get under that total maximum daily load that we've been regulated to. So with regard to the actual policy proposals, here are the requirements for anyone to get water outside of city limits. This isn't as though we're saying, all right, everybody, from here to Chino Valley, guess what? Guaranteed you've got water. Congratulations. That's not at all what this policy is. This policy simply says, if anyone would like to come and ask us for water, we'll take a look at it. If it's a project that we think is appropriate for the city, will be developed to the city's standards, it may be approved. That's all. To begin with, they'll have to tie into our sewer system so that we do get that recharged water. They'll have to either have infrastructure currently there, or pay for the expansion of the infrastructure, and they're done. Built to the city's standards, of course. They'll have to be compliant with all of our city codes. They'll have to be compliant with all of our city codes and policy with regard to water, meaning xeriscaping, low water use fixtures, rainwater harvesting, if that's something you all choose to adopt. They will also be able to use the city's incentives with regard to adopting even increased water conservation measures at their homes.
Clyde, could you reiterate once again that we've reiterated ad nauseam, but people continue to misunderstand? That if in fact we were offering sewer outside of city limits, the sewer infrastructure that would be built by a developer or separate home people, that would be paid for by who?
The developer themselves.
Okay.
The city doesn't pay for developers to come in. It doesn't support those, the infrastructure needs of the development. And that would be true outside of city limits as well. There'd be no reason for us to do that.
Right. Thank you.
Any property would also have to abandon their wells and septic tanks. They would have to pay the outside of city water rates and for larger developments, purchase the water rights. So purchase the cost that it costs the city to acquire that water upfront.
So Clyde, could I say something? So if a guy wanted 300 acre feet of water at $20,000, that'd be 6 million bucks before we did anything, right?
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
In addition to that cost, they would also have to do everything they would otherwise have to do if they wanted to annex, which is all of the Proposition 400 requirements. Supermajority vote of the council, public comment period, presentation of those public comments, and permanent recharge of all the effluent developed on those properties. As part of the outside of city limits policy, we decided it was probably a good idea to limit this geographically in scope, so we're not serving water to Skull Valley. And we came up with the general plan. So this map here with the areas where we would accept applications for water service is based primarily on the general plan. There are no hanging chads, as you were, or kind of flyers way off by themselves for individual people. There are a lot of false maps flying around for some reason. And this is the map that's been presented basically since last August.
So Clyde, could you tell folks what that map is? It's the total AMA.
So the blue line delineates the entire AMA. The black line delineates the city of Prescott city limits. And then the kind of gray-blue line or shading would be the area where we would accept applications for water service.
So not everything inside the AMA, just the shaded blue?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And with that said, this includes of course Deepwell Ranch, which was annexed and now already has water. But then, does this include the northern stretches of Deepwell Ranch?
I believe it does, yeah.
And is there any kind of limitation on that land, you know, north of the existing?
You know, I certainly am not part of the James family, although I wouldn't mind being part of the James family. But nevertheless, my understanding is they annexed in the portion that would be developed to put the rest in a trust to stay a ranch. So unless they were going to go change that trust, you're never going to provide water to a ranch any more than you're doing today. Isn't that, am I misunderstood something with?
That was a part of the DA when they annexed? Is that?
Clyde, I have a question. If we were to adopt this policy and extend water into the unincorporated sections that are included in this expansion area, and since the kind of handshake, well, it wasn't, it was an agreement with Prescott Valley and Prescott that we would honor certain boundaries of annexation and expansion that has since expired. So if Prescott Valley were to annex those unincorporated sections that we're providing water to, how do we go about enforcing the agreements on our water service agreements to those properties and property owners that now exist in a different municipality?
Well, we currently serve customers in another municipality, well, most of Chino Valley.
Right.
So that wouldn't be anything unusual for us to serve customers in another municipality. Secondly, if Prescott Valley wants to annex a lot of individual homes, it would be an incredibly difficult process. And at the end of the process, they would be providing roads, fire, police, and we'd be making an extra 30 percent on their water revenue. So they wouldn't be making any money on their water. So we'd still be kind of in a good situation there. Barring that, if you all decided you wanted to make it so that we would never provide water in a municipality if annexation were to occur, we could write that into the contract. That as part of any annexation, they would have to find an alternate water service provider.
Oh, should they be annexed by a municipality, then the agreement that we have would be voided?
Not voided, but as part of their annexation, they would be required to find an alternate provider. So that we would terminate provision of services, of water services, once the annexation is complete. So for their annexation to go forward, they would have to find water somewhere else.
We're claiming that all the users would agree with all of our conservation restrictions, fixtures, xeriscaping, et cetera. And if, and a change of ownership, they no longer are complying, how do we enforce that? Do we turn off their water?
Well, when we're providing water outside of city limits, we are acting in a quasi-governmental role in an enterprise fund. So we're now a business. So we would enforce those contracts the same way other private water providers enforce them. Contract matters. So injunctions, shutting them off, increasing rates, charging them extra when they don't pay, all of the things that a normal water service provider does, we would be doing.
Have we had any examples of that for current property owners that fall into that category?
I can guarantee we do, because we have so many water users outside of the city limits. I'm sure we deal with situations where people don't pay their bills or do things they're not supposed to. I don't have any for you now. But that's part of operating a business, just like operating our garbage. We have people that don't pay that. When we have people that use sewer, people don't pay that. We deal with those things on a regular basis.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusi?
Thank you, Clyde. I'd like to respectfully ask a few questions and make some points. When you look at the map, it's kind of vague, but according to my calculations, it's about eight sections across, which is one mile by one mile, and about 13 sections down, which is about 104 square miles of water service area. And I feel that that is, if you're talking about an expansion zone for future growth and water service area, I think that would be unmanageable. Because you're saying the Deepwell Ranch is going to stay a ranch, then why is, why is this included in the expansion zone? Shouldn't that be left out of our expansion zone, water service area? My other comment is, I feel that with the AED annexation negotiations, we need to complete those annexations first, because if we don't, then we lose our bargaining chip, which is water. And also, I'd like to, we just listened to the budget report by Mr. Woodfield. And if we are in the county providing water in sewer, we will never increase our tax base or get one cent of sales tax revenue from any commercial or businesses in this water service area, which is actually in the growth corridor for us, north of 989A, which is an eight-by-five section, square mile section, or 40 square miles. So without annexation, the county or Prescott Valley will reap the sales tax benefits. And I believe that there will, this will cause a plat rush of water service agreements, which will promote Phoenix-style developments in mass grading and unit production developments in the county. And I don't believe the county residents are happy about this. And also, in perpetuity, if we do install in the future all these water and sewer mains out in the county, we could possibly be maintaining 40 square miles of water and sewer lines out there in the county on the taxpayers' dime. And, you know, as citizens of Prescott, we're very community-minded, and I for one, speaking for myself, have been conserving water in order to protect the aquifer and the Verde River for future generations, not to fuel more growth. And I know that many people here in Prescott are very unhappy about that. And I know you feel to the contrary, but if you look at the map, especially north of 89A, it will clearly benefit just a handful of wealthy investors who own raw county dirt, not worth much now, but will reap a huge windfall without turning one shovel full of dirt if this policy goes in effect. I see no benefit to the taxpayers of Prescott. And as a member of Seawag, Seawag does support many elements of the new water policy, especially concerning offering sewer hookups to sensitive areas that drain into creeks and washes. They're okay with that, but they do not support water outside of the city limits without annexation. And according to my feedback from the emails that I've received and comments in the newspaper, the city of Prescott does not support this water policy, and the county does not support it. So, my next question is, how are we going to force county residents to hook up to a sewer system if, say they just don't want to do it? And if you want to provide sewer, we need to have a plan. We need to look at an options analysis, look at the upsides and the downsides. And let's start in neighborhoods that are in the city limits first. For example, in the Rossar Street area. So we should decrease that expansion zone. Let's start, maybe cut it in half, and keep the water service area south of 89A. Thank you very much.
Clyde, do you want to respond to anything there before I jump to the next council member?
There was just a lot. I'm writing it down.
There was, yeah.
So, to begin with, the water service area is big. It is. This is what the voters approved in 2015 with the general plan. That's what this is based on. This is the areas that the citizens said, here's what we think Prescott will look like in the future. As staff, it's our job to ensure that we can meet the general plan once we eventually get there. So that's why you have this proposal, to be assured that we have water for what the citizens have told us the city will look like at some point in the future. There are many, many, many service areas larger than what you see here statewide. So this isn't a large area for purposes of infrastructure, for purposes of maintenance. Many other municipalities and even private water service providers deal with this size every day on a regular basis. As far as providing commercial service outside of city limits, there seems to be a misconception that by passing this, this policy, everyone within this area is guaranteed water. For whatever project they want to do, including commercial. And that's not the case. It would have to come back before this council. If this council were to approve a large commercial development, really any commercial development outside of city limits, it would be rather surprising because of the things you talked about. We would lose out on our, really our only tax revenue source. So to say that we're going to lose commercial revenue overlooks the last big step, which is council approval. And the council approving large commercial developments would be kind of slim to none. You mentioned that we install lines going quite a ways. We wouldn't install any of the lines. All of that is done by the developer. All of that would be turned over to us once we've assured that it meets the city's specifications. The maintenance issue, we can speak to Mr. Woodfield, but I saw he ran away when this came up. But the 30 percent increase more than covers the maintenance required for those lines. In fact, that 30 percent increase makes it so that in-city customers' prices are a little bit cheaper. So the maintenance cost isn't a thing either because it's covered by the users. We can't force anyone in the county to hook up to city sewer. That's one of our big problems, and that's the reason that this policy is being adopted. We need to give people a reason to want to do it. That reason is our water. We can't go out and force people to hook up to sewer when they're in the county. We can say, if you would like the service from the city of very high-quality water, very reliable water, you're required to hook up to sewer too. For those that want to do it, wonderful. For those that don't, that's fine. They're not required to. Last, with regard to providing city sewer within city limits first, we're working on that. We have a commission going currently that's going to be looking at that over the next year. You heard about it in the budget today, that it's something we're actively engaged on and looking to do. In fact, we're looking at many, many different areas as far as conservation of water. We're looking at increased sewer inside of city limits. We're looking at decreasing septics and wells outside of city limits. We're looking at partnering with our neighbor municipalities. We're looking at this both on a very micro level within city limits with regard to how people use their toilets. I guess not how they use them, which toilets they use. And a very macro level, which is how the entire AMA is managed. We're looking at several different things at the same time. This is one piece of that puzzle. How does the city affect what happens outside of city limits? The only way we can do that is by offering something to people that they want to have, and that is our water. Now, I'm going to switch over to this thing.
Thank you. I just would like to clarify one thing. I was, when I was talking about commercial and businesses, I was presenting the scenario where if it's not annexed and we are providing water to the county or to Prescott Valley, we will not be collecting any sales tax, and we will not be increasing our tax base in this very critical growth corridor north of the city, especially along our Highway 89A.
And I won't second-guess the council. If some council in the future decides it's appropriate to approve a Walmart on 89A outside of city limits, then they're welcome to do that. It just seems like a very unlikely scenario.
Councilman Blair?
I don't have a prepared statement, but I will tell you that from my standpoint, it's a business. And when you write a contract, you cover all your bases with the contract. If it is a development and they want water outside the city, they're, commercial areas that they project to be commercial, those are initiated in the contract that they're in the city of Prescott, is where the revenues come. Second of all, I am amazed that people keep bringing up the fact that if we serve water to a section of land in the county that has county zoning on it at two, one structure per two acres, that's roughly 350 structures, and you take out the infrastructure, now you're down to maybe 300 structures per section. And I'm amazed that people would rather see septic systems and wells opposed to sanitary sewer and city water. At the developer's cost, added up charge, following Proposition 400, and all the things that are in this agreement, there is not a backward scale to this. It is all very positive. And frankly, I'm working hard over the last several years, and we're going to, we're going to kick it in the rear this time, about the sewer system, septic systems we have in the city, and what used to be in the county, which is Annalope Hills. And let's not forget that all these developments that are in Prescott now used to be in the county. Matter of fact, the Abbi Hills annexed in, and then they annexed out, and then they annexed back in. So, you know, when everybody says, it's okay, we'll give them water if they annex into the city, that's not what it's all about. It's about doing the right thing for our community, controlling our growth in our development areas. That's what it's all about. It's that simple.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. So Clyde, can you go back to the map that's the blue shade, which is the area that was approved in the general plan?
Actually, I can't prepare for this.
That one. There you go. Thank you. So all of that blue shaded area, we're all on the same aquifer, aren't we?
Yes.
We're all on the little Chino aquifer there.
Yes, we are.
So whether you're in the county, we're all using the same aquifer. Is that right?
It is.
So we're actually returning to our aquifer if those folks are on a sewer rather than a septic and they're on city water. Is that correct?
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Clyde, I want to thank you for working with the special interest groups in town to get their input and feedback. I know that you've met with them a few different times, and I appreciate you doing that. And I also appreciate having Prop 400 requirements in here. We did hear from the We did hear from the public in many cases, and I think that's a good thing to have in here, so I appreciate you doing that. Did you say earlier that Phoenix and Mesa both provide water outside of their city limits?
And Tucson, yes.
Phoenix, Mesa, Mesa and Tucson, okay. Yeah, and I just, I again am baffled with this whole community, this commercial development that Councilmember Rusing was talking about, because, you know, stated 100 times, I guess, it takes, but, you know, every one of these projects will come here to the dais for us to look at, whether it's an annexation or whether it's water outside the city limits, and we can determine what is the most beneficial for our municipality. So, you know, obviously, you are correct from my perspective. If there was commercial development and we had the opportunity to annex it, to get the sales tax, of course, we're going to do that. So, you know, it doesn't seem to me to be that hard, but I guess my concern here is, what I'm hearing is a lot of misinformation in the community. There's a lot of bad information, quite honestly, out there regarding this policy. And so, even though we've been at this for a while, I guess I would propose that we take more time to go over this, and this is a great presentation, but we just need to get it in front of more people. I would be in favor of taking more time just to go to the public and get this out so that everybody understands. I know that Mayor Protem has talked to some folks who were looking at some information on social media, and once she was able to sit down with them and talk them through it, then they understood truly what is in the policy and the benefits that you've already outlined here for us today. So, I like water outside the city limits. I think it's the best thing for managing the AMA, but I do want to make sure that we get good information out to as many people as we can. And maybe there's some more ways to improve this policy, and I'd be open to hear those things if we can come up with some improvements. I'm all happy to hear that. Councilwoman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, and/or Clyde, if you could speak to a little bit of the concerns about how this would or wouldn't affect the AED negotiations?
Well, you know, the mayor just alluded to the idea that he'd like to see more time. And I think he and I have also discussed the fact that the community is at a point where we need to make a determination about AED. And I think Clyde is going to talk a little bit about an idea he has come up with that could maybe move forward the AED negotiations and allow water outside the city limits otherwise to be put on the back burner, at least for a little while. And did you want to talk about that now, Clyde? I'm probably, we're kind of at the mercy of the people we work for, so I would suggest that you go ahead and talk.
Well, I think this is a good question. I think people in the community, I appreciate you bringing it up, Councilwoman Scholl, in the community want to understand how that's moving forward, how this policy could help move that forward. I think we all might want to see some conclusion to the annexation that makes sense for all of us to preserve the rocks and get the land at the airport. So, this section, there's, the last section in this proposed policy speaks to an IGA, which Clyde, in my opinion, is primarily speaking to Chino Valley. Is that right?
Well, Section 4 here, it's called out specifically because that would be exempt from the Proposition 400 requirements. And the reason for that is that it's just for IGAs and for when a development brings all of the water that's required for that development. These are very, 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 very rare occasions. Since I've been with the city, I think we've had three projects that even tried to bring their own water. None of them actually worked out. Since I've been here for actual water service, I don't believe we've done a single IGA yet.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you at some point read this for the benefit of the public watching as well as those in the crowd here?
Sure. I'm going to look at this one because it's easy to read. So, Section 4 is just for applications, well, I guess to begin with, there is a subsection C that just allows for new water connections subject to the city codes and policies. One of those is that individual applications for service of water outside of city limits to areas greater than 250 acres in size shall be subject to the requirements of the Prescott City Charter, which is Proposition 400. The one following that exempts both IGAs and projects that provide all of the water required for its own development from those requirements because both of those are extremely rare. With IGAs, we're dealing with another government. We have its own statutory regulations for how an IGA can be formed, can be approved, and must, the things it must include. So, to include these, it may be a burden on additional governmental entities. We would, there's a good chance we would get sued over it, as unconstitutionally trying to impede their ability to contract with us. So, it's exempt. For the last section, when a project brings all of the water that's required for it, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to say, "Well, I know you have a lot of water. I know you can cover it yourself. It's not going to take any city resources, but we want you to do all of these things too." Frankly, when a project is bringing its own water, the terms are such that we can set them to be whatever we want them to be. We can increase the amount so that we actually come out ahead on net water between those two. Also, because we're within an AMA, when someone brings water to us, it would be through the use of extinguishment credits, which means that's water that can't otherwise be used on another development somewhere else. It's extinguished. So, because these are such unique one-off situations that we are unlikely to encounter, they should remain unique, unlikely things that we deal with individually when they actually come up. Now, how that relates to Chino Valley, we may have an IGA that you will be reviewing the end of this next, or this, the end of March, that may provide for commercial water service in Chino Valley. One of the areas they're looking for a commercial service is a church. There are some, there's more interest along their commercial corridor for commercial service. We have spoken with them at great length about how that would work, how we deal with recharge credits, how we deal with conservation. You'll see all that at the end of March. As far as how this would relate to AED, I'm generally not directly involved in those negotiations with AED. However, it would give us another option that we say, "Listen, when your annexation works out, we don't have our water outside of city limits policy yet, but as part of your annexation as a one-off, you could bring to us the water that you require for your development." I know that some groups around town have been interested in more of a one-off deal with AED. This would give us the ability to do that.
So, what you're saying is, you know, obviously, we favor the annexation with AED. But if he wanted to be guaranteed water, if for some reason part of that annexation didn't happen, then this provision would guarantee the developer being able to develop that land section in the county with water that he brings to the table?
We could guarantee the water as long as we are guaranteed the land that we require as part of the deal. So, we could ensure that both the Dells are protected, the area around the airport is protected, sort of irrespective of whether or not the annexation occurs.
And you could articulate and define the land section that the water would be placed on?
We, because it's a one-off, we can negotiate for just about everything. We can say that these are the things we would like specifically, which is what the negotiations have been so far, without a real framework to them.
Question. You said you can almost negotiate anything, but based upon it being in the county, because it's not going to be annexed, when we're to do a one-off and provide them with water, they would have to stay within the county zoning structure of one unit per two acres, correct?
Well, it would be up to the county to determine the zoning. So, we couldn't limit another government in saying this is zoned for something. We could limit a particular development in what's built.
So, he could go to the county and get the zoning changed prior to wanting to bring his water?
He could do it before or after. The county does have the ability to get to smaller than two-acre lots, if and only if you have water. So, if he was allocated a certain amount of water for a land section, he could go to the county and then follow their zoning requirement.
Again, why our policy outside the city makes sense to clear up all this murky garbage that's out there? It'd be very clear-cut of what we're trying to do, and it's up and beyond board of what we're trying to do, and it doesn't make sense while we keep fighting over this thing. I mean, frankly, I think Prescott Mallay is out there foaming at the mouth that moved Jasperon into the Dells, and there goes the opportunity to save that place. We keep messing around with this. It's going to go away. And in the past history, I would hate that we repeat what we've done here as past councils when we ran a Walmart off to the reservation, when we ran a resort from the airport off. We've done a lot of these things because a council and the community couldn't come together of what was best for the community. When all of a sudden, this guy that has all the bucks because he bought the property when it was for sale and nobody else did, if he decides to fence it off or go to the county, go to Prescott Valley, and we've tried to negotiate in good faith, when that happens, it's all going to fall on somebody else's feet, not on mine. Because I support a very positive policy that cleans up our environment and our conservation efforts, period. And that's not a written statement here. That's from my heart. And if we lose this because of ignorance, then it's gone.
So, Clyde, in the interest of wanting to make sure we get moving on the AED annexation, you know, so we have everything in place to keep moving forward, is there a way to take this policy and move forward with that Section 4 that speaks to a developer bringing their own water and being able to develop in the county? Could we preserve, could we pull that out for now? Because I'd like to spend more time with water outside the city limits. Is there a way to?
Yeah, there is.
Pull that apart?
There is. Jason currently does not have water in its totality to do all that he wants to do. So, and Clyde could correct me if I got this wrong, but I think what he's proposing is that the rocks and the 483 acre, lot acres are purchased by the city with water, which is what we're talking about. At which point, Jason would then have the water to do his project in its totality. Hence, this provision would be applicable. Did I get that correct?
That would be one way to do it.
Yeah.
I guess I'm interested in making sure we don't slow down what's happening with AED. I mean, we've been pushing on this thing, and it's taken a lot longer than I ever thought it would take to get done. So, I want to do both. I want to make sure we take the time we need to study and educate the public on water outside the city limits, but not slow down the process of the AED annexation. So, if we could pull these apart and maybe consider approving Section 4 separately, but allow the others to be studied longer, I guess that would be, you know, one council member's proposal. Councilmember Rusing?
I just want to say thank you to everyone here for all their input and working together on trying to solve this problem.
Councilwoman Sishka?
Thank you. Clyde, how long have we been holding public meetings on this subject?
I believe it's eight months since this was first proposed.
Okay. And I have to tell you that Blair and I were at the Adult Center during one of these meetings, and a lady came up to us and was talking to us, and she said, "Why can't you just go longer? You know, inform more people. We need to have more information." And I said, "Well, what do you want us to do? Go door-to-door?" And she said, "Yes. Yes, you need to go door-to-door if that's what it's going to take to inform everybody." Well, that's probably not very reasonable. So, my question is, how long is long? How long is it before we're not going to hear one single person in Prescott say, "I didn't know about this, and I didn't know all the ramifications about this"? So, at some point, we got to blank or get off the pot. And, you know, I think that we need to set a time limit. We can't just have a ad infinitum information situation because it is going to, you know, it's going to be here 100 years from now.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that we need to move ahead on the AED as soon as we can. I just don't think the city can take another year and a half of what we had in the last year and a half. Really tore our city apart, and we were all trying to do the right thing. I've received lots of letters that were, "Don't rush, don't rush to do this." And we certainly haven't been rushing to do this. We've been trying to think this out, talk with folks, get information out there as much as possible. I really do like the idea of pulling out that one section and moving ahead with the AED, doing what we can to preserve the 475 acres in the Dells, as we've been promising that we would do for the last year and a half. I also would like to make sure that what we need for the airport is included in those little language for that, and let's get it all done at the same time.
Anything else from the council at this point?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to say one more thing. I agree with Billy. I think that if pulling out Section 4 is going to get this thing done for the Dells, then I say pull out Section 4. But I also say that we need to really take a look at the parameters which we establish for informing the public. And I think that the public needs to do a little of their own informing, like meeting with Councilwoman or myself, any other council people. We'd be glad to meet with them, to inform them, but I'm not going door-to-door.
Mayor, I'd say one other thing, and, you know, there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. And I just think you have, if you read something and it maybe doesn't make sense, call. Because there's, there were mistakes in what was out just recently on the Seawag Facebook page, and I'm happy to talk with anyone about it. But that's the type of information that gets out there, and then it's hard to pull the right information back in.
All right. I think we'll move on to public comment. We have about 30 minutes, so that should hopefully get most everybody through.
I have nine cards.
Nine cards, perfect. So, yeah, three minutes if we can stay at that, we'll get out of here when we need to.
Leslie Hoy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'm the person who posts on the Seawag Facebook page. I believe you might be talking about the Joe Trudeau's map. I'm not, I can't. And you said there were errors in it, so I suggest that you contact Joe. And if it turns out there were errors, then Joe can change the map, and I'll be happy to post another map. And I might add that the Seawag Facebook page is open for anybody to comment. The only comments I've ever deleted were because they were rude, so you're all free to comment too. Now, to what I wanted to say today. First of all, I do thank you for including the Prop 400 requirements. The cost-benefit analysis seems weak, but I need to talk about something else today, so I hope you'll take another look at the cost-benefit analysis. Ever since the Prescott Active Management Area was declared out of safe yield in 1999, the city managed its water supply mostly judiciously, except that it was handicapped by past bad water deals with area landowners. Suddenly, several months ago, you decided you had 10,000 extra acre-feet of water. You are now seeking to provide to the large landowners in this so-called expansion zone. That decision was based on a legal loophole discovered by an attorney hired by an unnamed party, most likely one of the large landowners in the expansion zone. Who hired that attorney? Before you pass the proposed policy, you need to tell us who discovered the loophole and who is going to directly benefit. You need to tell us because the water you are serving outside the city limits will increase the overdraft, will turn our area into just another Phoenix suburb, and will change the lives of Prescott residents forever. In the interest of transparency, would you like to tell us now who hired that attorney?
I'd like to know what you're even talking about. Number one, it's not a loophole. Number two, nobody hired anybody. So, there goes another example of hyperbole and false accusations, like putting a map that you didn't verify the viability up on your website. We did not hire anyone.
Not, I, the city did not hire the attorney. Somebody else hired the attorney. Okay, I don't want to go into how I know it, but the, suddenly you had 10,000 extra acre-feet of water. That, the fact that you- water. That, the fact that you had that was the result of a loophole in the water law that was discovered by somebody, and that was paid for by somebody to discover that loophole. And if you all don't know about it, you should, because where did you suddenly get the 10,000 extra acre feet of water?
Can I answer that? Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Sishka.
Where I see we got 10,000 extra acre feet of water is that we are legally able to pump 16,000 acre feet. We currently pump, and for the last several years have pumped about 6,700 acre feet, which ends up to be about 10,000 acre feet that we have headroom. That's the only place I've ever seen an extra 10,000 acre feet.
Well, there might be, maybe Pete Krupnik, who's here, will speak to the 10,000 extra acre feet.
Thank you, Leslie. We're going to want to make sure that we keep on time here.
Thank you, Leslie. Gordon Bond.
Hello. I appreciate the chance to speak to you today. My name is Gordon Bond, live in Prescott. Mr. Mayor, Council, until some important questions are resolved, we need to take a time out from further consideration of the water without annexation policy. Let's step back. As confirmed by Gary Woodard, each new house causes a net negative impact on the aquifer, no matter how efficient it is, no matter how well recharge is handled. So a question. You've asserted that the aquifer will be better off with the policy, a policy that will result in the construction of thousands of new homes. I've not seen any calculations that demonstrate that that's the case. Second, a couple of questions regarding some of the specifics in the policy, and this relates to something that was just said. ADWR stated in Page 12-9 of the Fourth Management Plan for the AMA that, quote, "The most prudent strategy is to avoid the use of the groundwater allowance altogether." That means that 10,000. In light of ADWR's advice, what's your rationale for the proposed policy? The second question, again, I have not seen any calculations of the impacts on the aquifer of all the construction, all the proposed construction, when only 60% or 80% of the supplied water is recovered. I've asked Clyde on and on, what's the impact on the aquifer? I have not seen calculations. I don't know if you're unable to calculate those things, but I sure would have more confidence in your efforts to move ahead if you could demonstrate that you had an understanding of what's happening with the aquifer. Third, the land use map that I think we've seen, this is directly from the general plan, the Stated City of Prescott Land Use General Plan. Doesn't say future expansion area that we're going to make sure is covered with houses sooner or later. It says, it gives land use designations zoning for different areas.
Thank you, Gordon.
I have a petition with questions that I'm submitting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Doug McMillan.
Mayor and Council, Doug McMillan, I live in Prescott. Just as the, I know the city spent time on studying the demand side and collected a lot of useful information that was great, but analogously, I think the same level of effort needs to be done on the supply side. With respect to studying the supply side, there's the legal water versus the science-based physical water. I think it's the real physical water that really needs to be emphasized. ADWR has a science-based side that expresses itself in its reports in the Fourth Management Plans, Fourth Management Plans. If you read the details in those, you'll see, really get into the nitty-gritty of it, it'll say, "This is a problem, this is a solution," but our hands are tied because of the way the laws are written. Incomplete information unknowns leads to risk. And because of the imbalance in the aquifer, a lot of the water comes from volume. And because of the non-homogeneous nature of the aquifer and what I explained before about all the cracks and how they're not connected, we don't know how big they are, that leads to that element of risk. Water is the foundation of a community, so long-term risk really needs to be minimized, and talk about potential future economic losses because of water problems. We should start off by collecting all existing information, science-based available, and we already know from ADWR that there's an imbalance. Where recharge occurs, recharge is occurring in Granite Creek, north of the Dells for 10 miles, where there's deep deposits of sands going down to the lower volcanic unit. It's a rare event. It happened in the early 90s, 2005, 2010, where flood flows occur. And when that happens, you get large amounts of recharge. In between those times, not so much. So that's the heart, that's the very heart of the recharge system. And we know where it doesn't occur. On either side of Granite Creek, there's deep deposits, hundreds of feet of clay. It's not happening there. And we know that there's this unequal distribution of groundwater. ADWR has recognized that between the Wellfield, Winchino, and where it's being recharged. And at the subcommittee, Water Subcommittee meeting, I brought that up about how there's an aquitard there. ADWR has recognized that in their studies. And it's made of clay, and it prevents that vertical movement downward to the lower, and it's, you can see that there's mounding there. If you look at the two hydrographs between the upper, lower unit, the upper one is going up in response to the recharge, the lower one, where we get our water, is going down. So with respect to solutions, I've always advocated sustainable alternatives. For, geez, 12 years I've been advocating the use of stormwater.
If you can wrap that up, that'd be great.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. I have some very specific recommendations that would be good for this, really good for the city, if you want to listen to me after.
Thank you.
Next comment card is from Ralph Hassan. He's requested that I read it rather than he address council directly. It states, "The definition of a project set forth in Article 6, Section 16A2C of the City of Prescott Charter entitled 'Voter Approval for Certain High Value Projects Taxpayer Protection Initiative' includes the transfer or sale of assets. Among these assets owned or controlled by the City of Prescott is water. Article 6, Section 16B1C provides, 'The city may not, without prior voter approval, through a proposition as ascribed herein, enter into one or more agreements or contracts relating to a single project, e.g. transfer or sale of assets, that conveys ownership or control of property or resources owned or controlled by the city, including any resource rights owned or assigned to the city but transported, sold or used by another party. Considering these provisions of the City of Prescott Charter, is the city required to submit any proposed water service policy or agreement outside of city limits for prior voter approval through a proposition.'" Next card is from Amber Fields.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for listening to the community and changing many of the components of the water policy. And I hope that process continues because I don't think we're done. However, I do need to say that the map that was, the service area map that you guys displayed today, was different. It is different from what you've posted, two different maps on your website, one that was up as recent as two days ago. So I think it's a little bit unfair to say there's a lot of disinformation out in the community, when some of the details of this proposal have changed in the public's eye as recently as today. And one of those other details that's changed as recently as today is that developers would actually have to pay for this water now. That's a new detail. Before, today, it's been that they would get the water for free, and then there would be a service agreement where the users would pay for that water. And I've explicitly asked that in meetings with the city, if the developers would have to pay for the water rights, and I was told no at that time. So that's something new that I think, you know, whether it's confusion on the public part or not, it wasn't made clear until today. I will say that Steve Blair is wrong about being able to just develop one house per two acres in the county. You can get a planned area development for high-density development, and the city would be providing water in those situations under this proposal. And then also, Steve, AED's land that is proposed for their annexation, the land in the Dells, is not adjacent to Prescott Valley. There's no shared boundary there. So to threaten that AED might annex into PV and we're going to lose the Dells to PV is just incorrect.
That's your opinion.
I'd like to keep my time. Thank you.
You bet.
And then I'm wondering, I didn't hear anything about the 25% open space requirement that specifically needs to be addressed. But thank you, Mayor, for saying that you would delay this a bit, because, you know, I really believe in Save the Dells stance is that it would compromise the AED negotiations. So, you know, it's interesting. I appreciate you saying there should be a time limit on the water policy, but why would the city want to do that with the water policy, and then you're not willing to do that with AED? So I think we just need some more time. If AED thinks they can get the water without annexing, then they very may well withdraw from these negotiations to Save the Dells. That's Save the Dells concern. And why wouldn't they? Because this proposed expansion area, AED is the biggest single landowner with 70, over 7,700 acres that would be in this water service area. And so we really, oh, and you know, it was only a year ago that AED did back out of the negotiations with council when we thought we were getting somewhere. So, you know, we can't just trust that they won't back out. So we really may lose the opportunity to protect AED's acreage in the heart of the Dells as open space if this water policy, this part of it, is passed first. Furthermore, the proposed service area includes Glassford Hill State Trust Lands, which would compromise what could be an incredible regional park, including the Granite Dells.
You can wrap it up. That'd be great.
Yes, thank you. And Glassford Hill. So again, thank you. I urge you all to proceed with caution.
Thank you, Amber. Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and Council, first, I had an issue I discussed with the Water Issues Committee. I just want to clarify because there's still confusion here. The thing, the last slide said if a property is over 250 acres, it needs to go through this procedure. That differs from Proposition 400. It had said it can't be over 250 acres at a date specific in the past. So I want to make sure that that is in here, that somebody didn't have 600 acres two years ago and divided it up into three 200-acre parcels and still slips through. I don't think anybody disagrees that the intentions here of the council and intentions of the staff, as mentioned previously on many occasions. And I don't think anybody disagrees that a lot of these exempt wells, small homes that are nearby, it's going to benefit for individual homes and even small neighborhoods. I think the question is these large parcels. And then, as I mentioned also in the Water Issues Committee, there are cases where if these large parcels are given city water, it is a detriment to the aquifer. People have said this is always going to be an advantageous situation. If somebody has their own well and they hook up, in septic, and they hook up, this is going to be advantaged to the aquifer. But let me give you an example. As you know, the Social Justice Foundation has a property on Overland, and we had a settlement before, as I mentioned, the Water Issues Committee, before we received city water, we probably would have built 40 units. That's all we could do because it was not a good well area. Now we're going to build 195 units. So even though there's going to be recharge from the 195 units, there's still going to be more of a loss to the aquifer than if there were only 40 units on septic because of the collection of maybe 70%, and you're losing 30% on 195 units. So there are some properties out there. It would be a detriment to the aquifer, and I hope council would consider that when individual properties come to the council, and if it's a detriment to the aquifer, you need to consider that. Mr. Mayor, over six months ago, when this was brought up, and the major issue here is safe yield that we've been talking about, and I thought you indicated you were going to be inviting all the parties in the AMA together to discuss developing a plan to reach safe yield. I've discussed it with other people, and they were under the same assumption that that would happen. We need to get all the parties together. We need to provide leadership here. Have you done that? Will you do that? What's going to happen?
Thank you, Howard. We did have a summit. It didn't get as far as we want to go, and we'll consider what to do next. Thank you.
That was not what you committed to do. You committed to asking the parties
Thank you, Mr. Mechanic.
to get together.
Travis Rushing.
How many of you saw the Arizona Republic's Sunday paper the other day? Kind of a scary article. It says, "Water Can't Keep Up With The Growth." Shows a big picture of a million houses. It says, "Solutions used to support the valley's growth are starting to run dry." You know, I prepared a statement here that I don't think is going to be very helpful at this point. I've learned a lot today. And it seems to me that you've identified a lot of the right next steps that you need to take. And it also seems to me that you've kind of been putting it off. So I only have one question for you today, and it's not for you to answer me, it's for you to answer yourselves. What's standing in your way? What's standing in your way to get on with what you know to do? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Travis.
Thanks. Paula Burr.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to say thank you very much, Mayor, for saying that this needs to slow down. It is because of public involvement in this process that this policy is better today, that there are new things coming out at this meeting than we've ever heard. And I'm probably, I won't say that, this is a better policy. And it's because of the public input, it's because of the special interest groups who, funnily, their interest is protecting water and land. That doesn't really seem like a special interest. That seems like a pretty important interest to everyone who's up here. There are a few things that I found slightly disingenuous about the presentation. First of all, saying that it would be easier to annex than to get water outside the city, that doesn't account for the fact that you have to currently have a border with the city to be annexed. So not having to have that border requirement would make many projects that are at the top of what you're proposing to extend water to feasible, which are not feasible right now. We have, I live in Prescott Valley, just outside of Prescott Valley, there's a huge development going in called Copperfield Ranch that could benefit from this policy, but it would not benefit from it because it is not adjacent to the city of Prescott right now, would not be able to be annexed. That Copperfield Ranch, by the way, is part of the AED ranch up there, they now calling it Copperfield Ranch. Also, the, it would be very impractical for people who have, who are on wells and septics right now, individual homeowners, to pay for the infrastructure to get city water and sewer out to their property. I mean, we all know how much that costs. It would be very, very prohibitive. So unless the city is willing to help with that, So unless the city is willing to help with that, all of those individuals who are on wells and septics right now aren't going to benefit from this. The people who are going to benefit from this thing that's the way it's set up right now, AED and Deepwell Ranch, and also all that State Trust land that is on the table that is not currently on the table for development. And, let me see if there's anything else. There have been many things that have come out at this meeting, and if the city, if the public is not informed, the city has some responsibility in that. And so, let's just slow it down, let's get the AED deal done, which we all want to get done. We've been work, you know, Save the Dells has been working hard on it as well, and continue to make this policy the best that it can be with continued public input.
Thank you, Paula.
Fred Oswald.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. You can count me among those concerned about the overdraft of the aquifer, which, as we've heard, was officially declared starting in 1999, but really has been occurring longer than that. And Prescott and its neighboring communities are just pumping too much water. And we haven't really heard anything suggested about reducing that overdraft. The Department of Water Resources has a goal of safe yield by 2025, but ironically, they also are projecting that Del Rio Springs, which is an indicator of the health of the aquifer, will go dry by 2025. It's been a couple of years since I've seen Del Rio Springs, but when I did, it was barely bubbling up to the surface. And, but years ago, that was the headwaters of the Verdi River through the Chino Creek, which is now a dry wash. So we've already dried up about seven miles of the Verdi River, and we're threatening to do more of that. We had an election last fall, and we had one challenger who got the most votes. And that is sort of an indication that maybe the citizens of this city are not too happy with the way we're going. And I would suggest that you conduct a public site, a vote of the citizens, to ask them what they think about this idea of doubling the size of the city with all the impact on water, not to mention crowding, busy streets, maybe a loss of our friendly small-town atmosphere. These kinds of things affect the citizens, and I don't think many of them are happy about it. And we should, in this public site, tell them that we're overdrafting the aquifer and that we're proposing to double the population. And I think you might find widespread concern. It is helpful that the mayor has asked that we take a little more time, and I salute you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks. Lois, thank you.
Hi there, my name's Lois Ferworth. I'm here today after spending nearly 34 years in corporate America, and I actually told several of you you'd never see me up here at this podium. And I couldn't help but break my commitment even to myself after what I heard today in this room. And I'm here to ask Mr. Mayor and the Council that you please reconsider your current approach to how you're working this problem. And the reason I bring that up is because big business, corporate America, has very similar kind of, where there's not a clear-cut, perfect solution to a problem or opportunity. And the approach they use in doing that, it's called options analysis, that's where I grew up, other companies might call it different things. But what it is, it's an approach that engages stakeholders, it engages community members, it even brings the naysayers to the table. And I bring that up because we listened to you and we were glad in 2019, when you said you were going to delay this, because you wanted to understand the unintended consequences. I think by bringing all these various groups together in an orchestrated and organized process that is driven by real data and/or probability of ranges when data doesn't exactly perfect, you know, perfectionally exist. And so what we can do is we can look at all the options that citizens have, and even the option that is being brought forward here today, to be able to understand and transparently look at the data and transparently communicate it to the citizens. I think that's what I see that's wrong with the process today. There's been lots of swirl and frustration because the data, in fact, today, I don't even know that I saw any numbers up on the PowerPoint screen. So it's the data that's driving the lack thereof is what's driving the swirl and/or the misinformation when citizens are putting together data that we would hope the experts that are part of the analysis would be doing. So I bring it to you today because I think in the absence of taking a much more data-based and transparent approach, we could be here four months, three months, six months from now, having the exact same meeting that we just had today. And I would hate that we would all go through that and continue the frustration in the community. You have, Mr. Mayor, a community here that is filled with talented experts, business experts, water experts, financial experts, that could help your city staff and complete this analysis. It could be done in a few months, and I think that's what we need to do to move forward in a way that everyone feels good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lois. That's all.
Okay. We're going to adjourn at this time, and we'll be back in about four minutes.